Ladies and gentlemen, please keep it down. Find your seats, please. Find your seats. There is no standing in the chambers. Keep it down. All staff off the floor. Members, please find your seats. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we're getting ready to start the meeting. If you're a guest with us today, you're welcome to join us upstairs in the balcony. Just talk to the sergeant-at-arms. They'll get you up to the balcony. Thank you for your assistance. NYC media, you're good to go? Thank you. Madam Majority Leader, good to go.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call?
Abreu.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher. Brennan. Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Epstein.
Present.
Felder. Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Morado.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy.
Present.
Menon.
Here.
Morano.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
I'm here.
Palladino.
Here.
Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikov. Thank you. Williams. One.
Present.
Zhuang.
Here.
Councilmember Vernikov? Thank you. Ariola.
Present.
Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present. Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Leon J. Gordon of United Apostolic Church, which is located at two oh five dash two four Hollis Avenue in Queens.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, source of all wisdom and love, we gather here today with hearts full of gratitude. We thank you for the privilege of service, for the opportunity to convene in unity, and for the shared purpose that binds us together. We're also profoundly grateful for the rich tapestry of backgrounds, experiences, and perspective present among us, recognizing that in our diversity lies our collective strength and capacity for understanding. We ask for your guidance upon all assembled. Grant to all your servants clarity of mind, integrity in their actions, and compassion in their deliberations. As they consider complex issues and make difficult decisions, illuminate their paths with your truth, that they may not act out of self-interest, but for the flourishing of New Yorkers. May their efforts be blessed with wisdom, that they may uplift our communities and foster spirit of justice and peace for all. Inspire each member to work with renewed dedication, to bridge divides and to serve with unwavering commitment to the common good. Strengthen their resolve to care for the vulnerable, to champion the voiceless, and to build a future filled with hope and opportunity for all the residents of this great city. Grant them strength to face the challenges ahead with courage and resilience, knowing that with your help, no obstacle is insurmountable. We pray your blessings upon their families, our neighbors, and all the communities they represent. Protect them from harm, guide them through uncertainty, and instill in them a deep sense of responsibility for the stewardship of the resources and trusts placed in their hands. May your presence be felt in this place, and may your grace guide their steps now and always. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would now like to spread the invocation on the record. Adoption of minutes?
None.
Messages and papers for the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M two zero nine. Controllers report.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M two ten. Commissioner of Elections appointment.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M two eleven. Election of Harvey D. Epstein, new council member, second district.
Welcome! Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M two twelve.
Thank you very much. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher. Brennan. Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye.
Thank you. Carr.
Aye.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Epstein.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Felice.
Aye.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mar Morado.
I vote aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Morano.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
I vote aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers. Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
I vote aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Yes.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams. One.
Aye.
Zhuang.
Aye.
Ariola.
I vote aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye. Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of forty-five in the affirmative and zero in the negative, and we will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin, I do want to acknowledge the death of James Jimmy Richard Ritches, an FDNY deputy chief who passed away from illnesses related to the September eleventh attacks. We will remember Deputy Chief Ritches for his bravery and his thirty years of service to our great city. We also remember him as a devoted father who spent months searching for his son firefighter Jimmy Ritches amidst the rubble at the World Trade Center. Deputy Chief Ritches was a hero and inspiration to his colleagues at FDNY, and my heart goes out to all of those who knew and loved him. I also want to acknowledge the seventy-three-year-old woman who perished in her home after a four-alarm fire broke out in the Bronx last Friday. My thoughts are certainly with her loved ones who are mourning their loss. And last week, I shared tragic news about a fatal electric fire that took the life of ninety-five-year-old Joyce Buncombe in St. Albans and left her daughter Paula and great-granddaughter Ayane Alani in critical condition. Today, I'm very saddened to report to you and share that six-year-old Ayane passed away last week. We are all heartbroken by these deaths of these New Yorkers, and our prayers are with their families, their loved ones, and communities now navigating their immense losses. I also want to acknowledge several days of commemoration. November thirtieth was Barbados National Day, which celebrates the country's independence from Britain after three hundred and sixty years as a British colony. December first was World AIDS Day, dedicated to raising awareness and remembering those we have lost to the disease. December second was Special Education Day, which commemorates the signing of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act into law in nineteen seventy-five. It is critical that we ensure students with disabilities have the services they deserve and are owed. Additionally, December third was International Day of Persons with Disabilities, a day to honor our disability community and advocate for further accessibility. And finally, I want to welcome Arthur Grabina to the People's House today. Arthur is a lifelong New Yorker and a World War II veteran who is celebrating his milestone one-hundredth birthday on the eleventh. Arthur! Arthur, we thank you for your service and for all that you've done for our entire nation. Welcome to the People's House, the house that you helped to build. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items: Seventeen twenty Atlantic Avenue rezoning, a private rezoning application that will facilitate the development of approximately three hundred new homes and two new buildings, over one hundred of which will be affordable, as well as commercial and community facility space in Councilmember Chi Osay's district. The council is modifying the application to require MIH Option Three deep affordability. Two applications by the Department of Parks and Recreation for walk-to-park site selections to facilitate the creation of new parkland. In the Brooklyn districts of Councilmembers Sandy Nurse and Chris Banks, the application will facilitate site selection and acquisition of twenty-three privately-owned properties. And in the Queens districts of Councilmembers Francisco Moya, Tiffany Caban, and Shaker Krishnan, the application will facilitate the selection and acquisition of twenty-two privately-owned properties. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items: Pre-considered resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brennan, would establish a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption for two buildings in Councilmember De La Rosa's district. Pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brennan would establish a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption for a six-story building in Councilmember Shana Brayus's district. Pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brennan would establish a new five-year Article XI would establish a new five-year Article XI tax exemption for a thirty-one-story building in Councilmember Eric Botcher's district. Pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannan would establish a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption for two buildings in Councilmember Crystal Hudson's district. And three pre-considered resolutions sponsored by Councilmember Brannan would establish new forty-year Article XI tax exemptions for eight buildings in Councilmember Camila Hanks' district. Next, we'll vote on the following resolutions. Resolution ten sixty-three sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph would designate November twelfth annually as Sigma Gamma Rho Day in the City of New York to recognize their commitment to sisterhood, scholarship, service, and positive community impact. Resolution nine eighty-seven, also sponsored by Councilmember Joseph, would declare July twenty-sixth annually as Haitian Canpa Day to celebrate the legacy of Haitian music and dance in our city's cultural landscape. We thank our staff member Regina Paul. Resolution eight forty-three sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens would call on the New York State Assembly to pass and the governor to sign A five sixty-five eight A S three seventy-eight, which directs the State Education Department and State Office of Children and Family Services to prepare posters and pamphlets to ensure foster youth are made aware of the higher education financial resources available to them. We thank our staff member Elizabeth Arts. Resolution two fifty-one sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley would call on the State Education Department to allow a lifeguard certification to substitute for physical education credit for high school seniors aged seventeen years and older. We thank our staff member Chloe Rivera. Resolution fifty-four sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala would call on the cities and states' education departments to collaborate and prioritize increasing the number of educators trained to work with English-language learners and to improve the quality and comprehensiveness of their education. Thank you to our staff members Regina Paul and Chloe Rivera. Resolution seven seven three A sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A thirty twenty-four, which directs the MTA to establish a student fare program for trains and buses. Thank you to our staff members John Basile and Kevin Kattowski. Resolution four ninety-eight A sponsored by Majority Leader Farias would call on the MTA to create a program that provides first responder agencies with real-time GPS data for all MTA buses. Thank you to our staff member Kevin Kattowski. Resolution ten sixteen sponsored by Majority Leader Farias would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation setting the minimum notice period for rent increases to sixty days for Mitchell Lama rental and co-op residence. And Resolution five seventy-five sponsored by Majority Leader Farias would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation providing for annual adjustments to the rental and carrying charges for Mitchell Lama developments based on increases in the Consumer Price Index. These resolutions are critical to supporting the financial stability of Mitchell Lamas and their residents. We thank our staff members Jose Conde and Eric Brown. Today, we'll vote on the following legislation. Introduction thirteen ninety-seven A sponsored by Councilmember James Gennaro would require the Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Department of Buildings to conduct a study to develop construction code amendments to address stormwater flood risks. Thank you to our staff members Natasha Bynum, Ciara Townsend, Ricky Chala, and Brad Reed. Introduction fourteen twenty-three A sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens would require the Department of Transportation to provide on its website an inventory of all city-owned retaining walls under their jurisdiction that are ten feet high or greater by October first, twenty twenty-six. We thank our staff member Theodore Miller. Introduction seven ninety-six A sponsored by, also sponsored by Councilmember Stevens, would require DOB to send a monthly email to all council members and community boards notifying them of new sidewalk shed permits that were issued during the prior month. Thank you to our staff members Austin Malone, Billy Eck, Jose Conde, Dirk Spencer, and Ciara Townsend. Introduction fourteen fifty-six A sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan would extend the moratorium on fines for certain awning and accessory sign violations until twenty twenty-eight. The Department of Buildings would also be required to conduct a public education campaign. Thank you to our staff members William Eck, Austin Malone, Dirk Spencer, Jose Conde, and Hannah Khan. Introduction twelve seventeen A sponsored by Councilmember Susan Zhuang would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to inspect buildings within fourteen days of receiving a three-one-one complaint relating to rats. Thank you to staff members Morgan Barrett and Audrey San. Introduction thirteen eighty-four A sponsored by Councilmember Linda Lee would amend the definitions of Site Safety Training Card and Site Safety Training Supervisor Card in the New York City Building Code to require that an applicant completed two SST credits related to mental health and wellness, suicide risk and prevention, and alcohol and substance use. Thank you to staff members Sarah Suter, Austin Malone, Billy Eck, Jose Conde, and Dirk Spencer. Introduction one zero zero two sponsored by Councilmember Kristina Maroto would require all schools to stock airway clearance devices within one hundred and eighty days after they receive authorization from the FDA for use. Thank you to our staff members Alejandro Carvajal and Sarah List. Introduction eleven fifty-four A sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon would require DOT to test high-visibility pavement markings that could be more visible to road users in poor driving conditions. Thank you to our staff members Nicholas Wutzowski and Mark Chen. Introduction eight ninety-five A also sponsored by Councilmember Menon would require all New York City schools and DOHMH-regulated childcare facilities to keep EpiPens on site. Thank you to our staff members Christopher Pepe, Sarah List, and Sahar Moazami, and Smita Deshmuk. Introduction twelve twenty-five A also sponsored by Councilmember Menon would establish an Office of the Census. Thank you to our staff members Jahari Menelik Fraser. Resolution four sixty-nine sponsored by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan would recognize May fifteenth as International Water Safety Day. Introduction fourteen twenty-five A sponsored by Councilmember Susan Zhuang would require the Department of Parks and Recreation to submit a quarterly report on the staffing levels of Parks Enforcement Patrol Officers and Park Rangers, as well as the incidents they responded to at city parks. Introduction ten fifty-nine A sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan would require the Parks Department to develop and publish information about water safety and drowning prevention. They would also be required to distribute written materials to every student. Introduction ten fifty-eight A sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan would require the Parks Department and the DOE to conduct a feasibility study on how high school students could be prepared to train to become lifeguards at city-managed beaches and pools. And introduction nine eighty-eight A also sponsored by Councilmember Krishnan would require the Parks Department to create an online map that provides up-to-date information about swimming pools under its jurisdiction. Thank you to our staff members Chris Satori and Patrick Mulvahill. Introduction thirteen ninety-two A sponsored by myself would require quarterly payments to contractors under certain contracts with the Department of Homeless Services and the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice beginning July first, twenty twenty-seven, and establish a pilot program for quarterly payments and other contracts. This bill is part of the council's larger efforts to reform our city's contracting processes to address longstanding delays that have hampered nonprofit services, operations, and long-term stability. Thank you very much to our staff members Alex Polenoff and Rachel Cordero. Finally, we will be overriding mayoral vetoes of four bills that respectively protect city PEPs recipients from rent increases and ensure they are not overly rent-burdened, advance pay equity, and improve city contracting. Let me be clear, there is no New York without working people. It's our responsibility as government to ensure that all New Yorkers can lead lives with dignity, opportunity, and safety. That requires affordable rents, pay equity for people of color and women, and city contracting functions effectively to allow nonprofits to focus on serving New Yorkers. This council has remained steadfast in protecting New Yorkers and putting their interests first, and today is just another example of our commitment. We will override mayoral vetoes of the following bills. Introduction thirteen seventy-two sponsored by the Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala would require that rent contributions for city PEPs recipients do not exceed thirty percent of the household's monthly income. Introduction nine eighty-two A sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban would require private employers with more than two hundred employees working in the city to submit a pay data report. Introduction nine eighty-four A sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias would require an agency to conduct an annual pay equity study on private employers with two hundred or more employees. And introduction twelve forty-eight B sponsored by myself would codify an Office of Contract Services who would serve as the city chief procurement officer. Thank you, colleagues, for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into the discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Hanif, followed by Gennaro, then Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. In his final month in office, Mayor Eric Adams has made one thing unmistakably clear.
There will be silence in chambers. Sergeants, please remove the folks from the gallery that are disruptive. I will have silence in the chambers. Either comply with the sergeants and remove yourself from the gallery, or they will remove you. I will have silence in the chambers so we can continue on with the agenda.
There will be order in the People's House.
Thank you so much. I'd now recognize Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you. In his final month in office, Mayor Eric Adams has made one thing unmistakably clear. He is apathetic to the needs of working-class New Yorkers. At a time when families are struggling with rising rents, stagnant wages, and a broken contracting system, the mayor chose to turn his back on real, tangible solutions. Today, this council has both the opportunity and the obligation to stand firmly on the side of New Yorkers by overturning the mayor's veto on four critical pieces of legislation. Intro nine eight two A and intro nine eight four A sponsored by Councilmembers Amanda Farias and Tiffany Caban move us toward true pay transparency and equity in the private sector. By requiring data reporting and a comprehensive pay equity study, these bills give our city the tools to uncover persistent wage gaps and take meaningful systemic action. Intro thirteen seventy-two from Councilmember Diana Ayala ensures that city PEPs households are not rent-burdened and pay no more than thirty percent of their income toward rent, an essential safeguard as housing costs continue to skyrocket. An intro twelve forty-eight B championed by Speaker Adrian Adams establishes an Office of Contract Services to finally bring transparency, oversight, and accountability to a contracting system that has long failed nonprofits and taxpayers alike. For Mayor Adams to veto these bills in his final weeks is more than disappointing. It's a deliberate rejection of fairness, stability, and basic good governance. It is a slap in the face to working women fighting for equal pay, to families striving to stay housed, and to every New Yorker who expects their tax dollars to be managed responsibly. I am proudly voting to override Mayor Adams's veto on all four bills, and I urge my colleagues to join me in putting the needs of New Yorkers above the indifference of this administration. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Caban, then Menon.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I'm speaking on intro one three nine seven A about stormwater management. Intro one three nine seven A is the next step in the work that I, we began last year when we passed Local Law one twenty-four, a law that mapped where inland flooding is most likely to happen in New York City. Coastal flooding areas have been mapped for more than ten years, but not inland flooding areas. As New York continues to face the growing threat of terrible weather events, we must make sure that our building codes reflect the realities of the changing climate. In recent years, storms like Ida made it abundantly clear that flood risk is not unique just to shorelines. Inland flooding from rain is a big new concern. And by incorporating inland flood risk into our construction rules, this bill closes a critical gap in our resilient strategy and helps protect homes, businesses, and lives from future floods. This bill moves us forward in three simple but powerful ways. One, it brings the right city agencies together to study how we should build in areas that repeatedly flood from heavy rain. This study will result in changes to the building code. Two, it requires the DOB to clearly show residents when a property is in an area at high risk for inland flooding so people can make informed decisions. And three, it adds basic protection to our building code to ensure above-ground fuel tanks in flood-prone areas are elevated, a small but important change that can prevent big problems when streets and basements fill with stormwater. This bill ensures that New York City treats inland flooding with the seriousness it deserves and that we are preparing all our city, preparing all of our neighborhoods for the climate realities of today. I'd very much like to thank the speaker, the bill sponsors, the member of the EPRW Committee, and all the staff of the committee that worked on this bill, including my LD, who's sitting behind me, Josh Gachet. Thank you all very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Caban, followed by Menon, then Stevens.
Thank you. I want to start by stating that I am deeply disappointed, but unsurprised, that Eric Adams decided to use his last weeks in office to betray all women on behalf of big corporations. His veto of the Caban-Farias pay equity package is a betrayal of the working class and especially of Black and Brown women who suffer the most from pay inequity. I'm proud to join my colleagues today in overriding his bid to impress the billionaires he's soon going to need a job from. And when we shine a light on inequity, we create the conditions to end it. These are bills that are about accountability and equity for New Yorkers, especially the women and people of color who have been underpaid and undervalued for generations. This legislation would not have been possible without the steadfast leadership of Majority Leader Amanda Farias, the tireless advocacy of Power New York, legal momentum, and so many organizations and workers who have fought for pay transparency and fairness. And I want to thank Sarah Swain from the Legislative Division for her help with it, and extend my thanks to Jonah Birch and Celia Castellan for my team, for their commitment and collaboration in getting this across the finish line. And thank you to Speaker Adams and the Speaker's team for your support in overriding this absolutely ridiculous veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. Recognizing Councilmember Menon, followed by Stevens, then Zhuang.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader. I'm pleased today to talk about two of my bills that we are going to be voting on. The first, intro twelve twenty-five, creates a permanent Office of the Census. This is really mission-critical because in 2020, when I served as the city's Census Director, we were left scrambling trying to get every New Yorker counted. And due to the efforts that we launched, where we partnered with hundreds of community groups that were trusted voices in their neighborhood, and due to the partnership that we had from so many groups across the city, we were able to finish number one on the census of all major cities, meaning that we are still receiving billions of additional dollars for our schools, for SNAP, for Head Start, for hundreds of vital social service programs. This permanent Office of the Census will then allow New York City to plan properly to ensure that every single New Yorker is counted. And given the fact that in Washington right now there are once again efforts to unlawfully add a citizenship question to the census, something that we successfully fought at the U.S. Supreme Court, this office is going to be more important than ever to start early. And then, secondly, I wanted to talk about my bill eight ninety-five, which would require every single school and childcare facility across New York City to provide lifesaving EpiPens. As a mother of a food-allergic child, I almost lost my son when he was two years old due to anaphylactic shock, and it was only an EpiPen that saved his life. And so, I want to take a moment to thank Deena Hawthorne and Thomas Silvera from the Elijah Foundation for their advocacy. I want to ask them to stand up. They lost their son Elijah when he was three years old. And I want to thank them for their partnership. I want to thank them for honoring the legacy of their son, which we are doing today by passing this bill. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens.
Good afternoon. Today's a true honor. The bills that we're moving forward is not just a legislative win. It's a moment of reflection of the reason why I serve. Each bill in this package was shaped by my experience of our communities and passing them together. package was shaped by my experience of our communities and passing them together representing a meaningful step towards transparency, equality, and empowerment of New York City. Intro 796A will bring transparency to something that every day, but deeply impacts us, our sidewalk sheds. For so long, these structures have gone up without explanation, information, and they affect families and businesses, and the feeling of blocking entire blocks. This bill gives the communities the clarity that they deserve about what's happening in their neighborhood. And with Intro 423, we're taking positive steps to ensure safety by creating a public inventory of city-owned retaining walls. This lets people have an understanding with the conditions of the infrastructure around them and how it helps prevent emergencies from happening. With those bills, they address issues, but they share one powerful purpose: to put information and their power back into the hands of the people. Because when our residents have access to real-time, timely information, they can advocate, they can organize, they can shape their own futures. This is what the legislative package represents: listening to the community, honoring their lives, experience, and ensuring that government works with them, not around them. I'm grateful to my colleagues and their partnership to be proud champions of this legislation that centers transparency, equality, and human dignity. Together, those bills push us closer to a city where every voice matters and every community is respected. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Zhong.
Thank you, Ma'am. Thank you. As a city council member, it's a, I think it's a rollercoaster ride for my job. Yesterday, I was responding to IC in my district. Today, I'm here to champion for better quality of life for all the New Yorkers. Probably all my colleagues had phone call complaints from our constituents. The park is not safe. There's violence activity in the park. We all asked NYPD and Parks for patrol, but we rarely see any park staff and because there's not enough PAP officers or PAP rangers in our city. Intro 1425 will allow us to see where our current staff are deployed by park and what enforcement they conducted. We'll also learn every quarter the current staff levels. I want to thank DC 37 to work close with me on this bill. And also, in New York City, we cannot regulate the rats, but we do able to regulate the city agencies. We want to make sure the city agency do their job. When they get phone calls from our constituents, they have to answer all the 311 calls. I'm happy to tell everyone, Intro 1217 will require Department of Health inspectors to inspect a property within 14 days after 311 call. I'm happy to say, we also include the language. Make sure if DOH cannot gain entrance for inspection on the first attempt, they must make sure second attempt within 20 days. I want to thank all the people who worked on my bill, and also especially, I want to thank my PR, Kalen Orick. She worked very hard on both bills. And also, I want to say to Mayor-elect Mondani, you want to make the city affordable, make our parks safe, so we can enjoy having the hopeless romantic date in the parks, too.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Civil Rights and Human Rights, Intros 982A and 984A, Pay Data and Pay Equity.
Coupled on general orders.
M's 191 and 192 veto messages for Intros 982A, 984A.
Coupled to be filed.
Report of the Committee on Contracts, Intro 1248B, Office of Contract Services.
Coupled on general orders.
M 193 veto message for Intro 1248B.
Coupled to be filed.
Intro 1392, Vendor Payments.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, Intro 1002A, Airway Clearance Devices.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfront, Intro 1397A, Stormwater Flooding.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Preconsidered LU 440 and REZO 1174 through preconsidered LU 446 and REZO 1180 Tax Exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 1372, Rental Assistance Vouchers.
Coupled on general orders.
M 194 veto message for Intro 1372.
Coupled to be filed.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation, Intro 1225A, Office of the Census.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Health, Intro 895A, Epinephrine Devices.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intros 796 and 1217A, Sidewalk Sheds and Building Inspections.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1384A, Construction Site Safety Training.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1456A, Onnings and Accessory Signs.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 420 and REZO 1181 and LU 421 and REZO 1182, Walk to Park Sites.
Coupled on general orders.
LU's 426 and 427, MTA 125th and Lexington Rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intros 988A, 1058A, and 1059A, Pools, Lifeguard Core, and Water Safety Materials.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1425A, Urban Park Rangers.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, Intro 1154A, High Visibility Pavement Markings.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1423A, City-Owned Retaining Walls.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU 422 and REZO 1183 and LU 423 and REZO 1184, 1720 Atlantic Avenue Rezoning.
Coupled on general orders. Before we move into the vote on general orders, we will now consider the four bills vetoed by Mayor Adams. These bills are introductory numbers: 982A, 984A, 1248B, and 1372. The question before the council now is, shall these four bills pass? The objection of the mayor notwithstanding, and I now call on the clerk to take a roll call vote only on the four bills that were vetoed by Mayor Adams.
Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher. Brannan. Brewer.
I'm voting aye. I do think in 982A, great respect for Councilmember Caban. It is a little rough to try to get that implemented from the perspective of the employer. I'm all for the data, but I just want to warn people, it could be a major burden for some of the employers. Thank you very much.
Brooks Powers.
I vote aye.
Caban.
Very proudly, aye.
Thank you. Carr.
Aye on Intro 1248, and no on the rest.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Epstein.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
No on all.
Hudson.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. As you've heard from some colleagues already, today we again confront a familiar pattern from this administration: vetoes that ignore the realities facing working-class New Yorkers and undermine the clear decision and veto-proof majority these bills passed within this council. With mere weeks left in office, the mayor has once again chosen obstruction over collaboration, rejecting bills that strengthen pay equity, keep low-income tenants from being rent-burdened, and finally bring long overdue accountability to a contracting system that routinely leaves nonprofits waiting months to be paid for critical work. Our responsibility is not to protect any mayor's legacy, it is to protect New Yorkers. These bills passed with overwhelming support because they address real needs in every district represented in this chamber, and for that reason, I vote aye to override these vetoes. Thank you.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Mamorato.
I vote aye on 1248B and no on the rest.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Thank you. Morano.
Aye on 1248B and no on the rest.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I share my colleague's concern on 982B, I mean A. While I'm concerned, I share, I don't have to repeat the same thing that Gail Bure mentioned, and I would aye, but I have a little concern on it. I'm still having concern. Thanks. I would aye on.
Nurse.
Aye on all.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
No on all except for 1248B, in which I vote yes.
Powers.
Aye on all.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Vernikov.
No on all with the exception of Intro 1248, in which I vote yes.
Williams. One.
Aye on all.
Zhuang.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Areola.
Yes on 1248B and no on all the rest.
Farias.
I proudly vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye on all.
The vote is as follows: Intro 982A, 40 in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, 0 abstentions. Intro 984A, 40 in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, 0 abstentions. Intro 1248B, 46 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Intro 1372, 40 in the affirmative, 7 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Madam Speaker, the council votes to override the mayor's vetoes with 2/3 voting in the affirmative.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Thank you, colleagues. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the remaining items on today's general orders calendar.
Sorry, one moment. Abreu.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher. Brannan. Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
Aye on all.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Epstein.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Mamorato.
Aye on all. Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues today for the support in Intro 1002, because it is one that is very personal to me. After losing a family member to choking, it's a devastating loss that nobody can explain or even begin to imagine. So when it comes to children, I just felt like we needed more safeguards or stronger safeguards put in place in the schools, and I'm just so proud that every school will have an airway clearing device stocked in their department, and their staff will be trained. And even if this just saves one life, it really is something that is meaningful, and I just thank you for everybody for the support. Thank you.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Morano.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Before casting my aye vote on everything, I want to speak from the heart about the driving force behind this legislation, Intro 1002. Intro 1002 exists for one reason, because Councilmember Kristi Mamorato refused to accept that a child choking in a New York City school should ever lose their life simply because the right life-saving tool wasn't there. This bill will change that. It will save lives, a lot more than one, and that's a legacy any public servant would be proud to leave, but it's especially fitting for Kristi. In just a few weeks, Kristi will be leaving this council, and I can tell you personally, I'm really going to miss her. She is not only one of the finest, most conscientious council members we have, she's a remarkable human being, steady, compassionate, and sincere in a way that you don't see often in politics, and she's become a true friend. And this bill reflects the best of her, her heart, her determination, and her belief that government should meet people at their most vulnerable moments and make sure they're protected. So I'm proud to co-sponsor this legislation. I'm proud to vote yes, but more than that, I'm proud of Kristi for her leadership, for her service, and for the countless families who will never know her name but will one day get their child back because she insisted that this city do better. And with that, I enthusiastically vote aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
I vote aye.
Palladino.
I vote aye.
Powers.
I am voting aye, and I wanted to take the opportunity to welcome my former Assembly member and now neighbor in the City Council for a couple of weeks, Harvey Epstein, to the City Council. Nice to see you here. My condolences to you. I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. Congratulations and welcome.
Wrestler.
I'd like to be associated with the remarks of Councilmember Morano and congratulate Councilmember Mamorato on her service here, and vote aye on all.
Riley.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Schulman.
Aye on all.
Stevens.
Aye on all.
Ung. Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams. One.
Aye.
Zhuang.
Aye.
Areola.
I'd like to align myself with Councilmember Morano's statements about
I'd like to align myself with Councilmember Morano's statements about my wonderful colleague, Christie Mamorato. You're a friend, you're a colleague and you're a sister. Thank you so very much. Um, and I vote aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
Aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of forty-seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of general of resolutions, pardon, and I'd first like to recognize Councilmember Joseph, followed by Riley, then Stevens.
Thank you, Majority Leader. So today we're voting on July twenty-sixth. As Haitian Compa Day, how many people here love to dance? I know you do. All right. To celebrate, to celebrate the legacy of Haitian music and dance in the cultural landscape of New York City. So that's my first one. My second one is to thank the sisterhood, the hard work, for the love of Sigma Gamma Rho. November twelfth will now be designated as Sigma Gamma Rho, and you told me I had fifty seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Stevens.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today with resolution two fifty-one, we take a meaningful step toward protecting our young people and expanding opportunities, especially in the communities that need it the most. Can I start over?
Yes, please restart the councilmember's time on the clock, clerk.
Thank you.
Can we please have silence in the chambers?
Please quiet for the Councilmember Riley, please. Thank you. Thank you, Majority Leader. Once again, today we, with resolution two fifty-one, we take a meaningful step toward protecting our young people and expanding opportunities, especially in the communities that need it the most. The resolution calls on the State Education Department to allow high school seniors to count lifeguard certification toward their PE credit, moving us toward a safer and more prepared city. We all know the urgency around water safety. Drowning remains one of the leading causes of unintentional deaths across the country, and in New York has faced ongoing lifeguard shortages that have closed pools, limited hours and cut off recreation for families, particularly in our city's underserved neighborhoods. Resolution two fifty-one gives us a real solution. It builds a pipeline of trained young people who gain lifesaving skills, leadership experience and meaningful job opportunities while keeping our pools and beaches fully staffed and safe. I'm requesting everyone to support resolution two fifty-one, and thank you, Majority Leader, for your time.
Recognizing Councilmember Stevens.
Today we, um, voting on resolution eight forty-three, sponsored by myself, foster care, um, youth face enormous boundaries in the path to higher education, including inconsistency, support, limited guidance and a lack of clear information about the financial resources available to them. Nationally, only five percent of foster care youth graduate from four-year colleges. The state, um, the state's legislation, this resolution supports, addresses this gap in, um, procedural achievements. They are requiring the State Education Department and Office of Children and Family Services to prepare, distribute clear, accessible materials about financial aid for foster care youth. This legislation ensures that young people are not held back by simply because, because they never were told that this information or these resources existed. The state senate has already shown its support by passing this bill early this year, and it is now up to the Assembly and the Governor to act. This resolution is about empowerment, empowerment. It's about making sure every foster care youth, every student navigating the child welfare system has the information they need to pursue higher education and build the fair future they deserve. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolutions into the record. Resolution fifty-four calls on the New York City Department of Education and the New York State Education Department to collaborate on and prioritize increasing the number of educators trained to work with English language learners and to improve the quality and comprehensiveness of English language learners' education. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution two fifty-one calls on the New York State Education Department to allow a lifeguard certification to substitute for physical education credit for high school seniors aged seventeen years and older. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution four sixty-nine recognizes May fifteen as International Water Safety Day. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution four ninety-eight A calls on the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to create a program that provides New York City's first responder agencies with real-time global positioning system data for all MTA buses. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution five seventy-five calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation providing for annual adjustments to the rental and carrying charges for Mitchell Lama developments based on increases in the Consumer Price Index. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution seven seventy-three A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Assembly Bill number thirty twenty-four, which directs the Metropolitan Transportation Authority to establish a student fare program for trains and buses. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution eight forty-three calls on the New York State Assembly to pass and the Governor to sign Assembly Bill number fifty-six fifty-eight A and Senate Bill number three seventy-eight, which directs the New York State Education Department and the New York State Office of Children and Family Services to prepare posters and pamphlets to ensure that foster youth are made aware of the higher education financial resources available to them. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution nine eighty-seven declares July twenty-sixth as Haitian Compa Day annually to celebrate the legacy of Haitian music and dance in the cultural landscape of the city of New York. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution ten sixteen calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation setting the minimum notice period for rent increases to sixty days for Mitchell Lama rental and co-op residence. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution ten sixty-three designates November twelfth annually as Sigma Gamma Rho Day in the city of New York to recognize the sorority's commitment to sisterhood, scholarship and service and to positive community impact. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Morano, followed by Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Uh, before I begin, I want to take a moment to welcome our newest colleague, Councilmember Harvey Epstein. Harvey, we're glad to have you here, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Um, today I'm introducing legislation that I believe will make a meaningful difference in the lives of countless New Yorkers. It addresses an issue that too often goes unnoticed until it's too late, concussions, traumatic brain injuries and the long-term risks associated with repeated head impacts, including CTE. Most people think of CTE as something that only affects professional athletes, but the truth is, it affects young athletes, recreational players and many of our own city employees working in physically demanding or high-risk jobs. And tragically, here in New York City, we were reminded of the stakes, uh, in July when the Midtown shooting involved an individual who believed untreated head trauma had caused his mental decline. Nothing excuses violence, but it really showed how critical it is to take this issue seriously. And what we lack right now is awareness. In fact, in the Netflix documentary about Vince McMahon, I was very surprised to see how many professional athletes questioned whether CTE is even real. I, if that's where the understanding is, we have a lot of work to do. So this bill focuses on exactly that. It creates a citywide public education campaign so families, coaches and workers know the signs of concussions and where to get help. It makes concussion and CTE awareness training available for city employees in high-risk jobs, and it requires a recurring report so we can understand the trends and shape smarter policy moving forward. It doesn't ban sports, doesn't interfere with privacy, it simply gives people the information they need to protect themselves and the people they care about. So I'm proud to introduce this legislation. I think it complements, uh, some legislation that the council's already passed, and I welcome and encourage all of you to sign on as sponsors so we can move this forward together in the early part of next year.
Recognizing Councilmember Gutierrez. Thank you so much. Today, I'm excited to introduce Bill number fourteen ninety-five. It's the doula bill of rights. This legislation is the next step in our large effort to strengthen birth justice in New York City. Earlier this session, we passed the citywide doula program to codify and expand access to doula support across our communities, and now we're making sure the people who provide that care, that service, that they are respected, they are recognized in these places they go to work, they are protected and that they are listened to. The bill reflects years of conversations I've had with doulas, midwives, birth workers and new parents. Again and again, they told us that the system can feel opaque, inconsistent and at times downright hostile to the very people supporting families through one of the most vulnerable moments of their lives. The doula bill of rights aims to bring clarity, accountability and dignity into that space. Under this legislation, the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene will be required to develop and publish a clear, accessible list of rights for doulas working in hospitals. These rights will help ensure that doulas can do their jobs safely, collaboratively and without unnecessary barriers, and that birthing people know exactly what they're entitled to expect. The bill also creates a formal feedback channel, a submission form for doulas to share concerns, experiences and recommendations directly with the city. Finally, the doula bill of rights establishes a permanent doula advisory council made up of doulas, recent parents, the commissioner and a representative from New York City Health and Hospitals. Their charge will be to study the realities of doula work, review feedback and advise on the growth and implementation of the citywide doula program, ensuring it remains responsive and equitable as it expands. I know I've spoken a lot about doulas in my time here to this body. They're all very different and they all support one another, all, all the bills that we're so lucky to pass, and I'll continue to talk about doulas because our work is not done until every single birthing person is receiving a safe empowering birth experience that I was so lucky to have. We're building a system that listens, learns and evolves from the voices of those who know it best. Thank you so much. I encourage all of you to sign on. Thank you so much, Councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call, recognizing Councilmember Juang.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, today I introduce a bill which will allow New Yorkers to file a three-one-one complaint when their SNAP benefit gets stolen. This is the number one case in my office. We get probably eight hundred one thousand cases a year about SNAP benefit gets stolen. Starts September thirtieth this year, HRA no longer take these complaints anymore, and the federal reimbursement stopped last year with the new president. Now people are seeing their benefit get cut in half. SNAP theft is still rampant in our city. It's the number one case probably in a lot of council members' office. Most of the time, these are seniors unsure how to use EBT age app or unsure what they should do when their benefit is stolen, which this bill can simply refer to New Yorkers to one, one place, file a three-one-one complaint. NYPD will be notified and we will, the person will receive information where they should go to get food assistance, especially those family with needs. This process will assure our seniors get typical help and deserve, and deserve help. Also, they will get help from our law enforcement to crack down on this theft as right now there's no agency keep the record for SNAP theft in our city. I hope together we can pass this bill, help people with needs. Please help, please sign on my bill intro fifteen hundred. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you very much. The stated meeting of December fourth, twenty twenty-five is hereby adjourned.